All right, commissioners, your meeting is live.
Well, good morning. Welcome to the May Day meeting of Riley County Commercial. Commissioners, please stand and join in the pleasurable meetings.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some little liver and mayflower basket.
I think it's my brother's birthday.
I remember doing that as a little kid.
Yeah, that was a big thing.
Any public comment?
Commissioners, I only had there, there were a couple of, you know, we've got jam packed agendas. And so there were a couple of changes that were requested. Barry needed to come over and have a discussion with, for a performance matter with the commission and to accommodate his schedule. I, I talked with Bowler and I said, Mike, would you mind moving to my admin time at 10:15? And he said, sure. And so I said, I don't need admin time. And so the quest, the request would be to move noxious weed presentation to 10:15 and then have, have Barry's executive session at 9:15. And then at the end, I am requesting, it shouldn't be more than 15 to 20 minutes, an executive session to discuss the performance matter of non-elected personnel for the purpose of discussing the terms of employment of employee, right? Which is a little different than the, the work conduct of an employee, although it touches on the work conduct as well. And so I would be requesting that for 15 to 20 minutes at the end. Those are, those are the requests. Done a lot of coordinating with people.
You need to make a motion or just?
Either way, I don't know.
That's, that's fine.
Three by consensus?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it's already been mentioned, but happy May Day, everybody. It's hard to be even closer to the middle of the year now than the beginning part of it. I guess this is the part where it gets warm, so. So be it, I guess. Monday afternoon, attended the intergovernmental luncheon at Rock and Case, which of course we're hosting this year. Started off by listening on the Topeka National Weather Service out of Topeka's webinar in lieu of Monday night's severe weather. There's a couple of quick takeaways on that. One, just how accurate their forecast actually was, except for the, the raining of hail that came down. But they did kind of say that's what was going to happen, so. Pretty accurate. And then two, just how many emergency management directors on the call that I actually would know as well kind of, kind of took me back a bit. Next, we got an update and presentation from Food and Farm Council. We've got our usual updates from everybody in attendance as well, so. Tuesday evening, met with Riley County Councilor Bryant Parker to discuss some relevant items of interest and get updated on a couple of items that will be coming up shortly. Good dialogue, answered some questions, so on and so forth, worked out pretty well. And then lastly, just wanted to put this out there, mention it. There is an RHID process that's working its way through Leavenworth County currently. It's a development project in the works in the city of Lansing. I think there's a couple of other ones that are going to be upcoming there too, but. Apparently it's become pretty contentious, or at least contentious enough, they have to have a second public hearing on this. And that's taking place this evening during their city council, city commission meeting. I don't know if they have a council or commission, I'm still trying to get caught up here, but. Also worthy of mentioning, the county is quickly working to draft a policy on their own too. They had that discussion during their last Wednesday's meeting. You can check either one of these meetings out on YouTube as well. It's worth the watch because this policy that they're developing actually has a lot of similarities to the ones we've drafted. And just to put it out there, we haven't, we've had no collaboration, no, no discussions, everything is separate. I have reached out to three of the commissioners and I know there to get some more depth and some feedback as well as a copy of it for review, but just thought it was worth mentioning, just all things considered, so. And that's really all I've got. It's been a long, busy week outside of that.
Okay, well, Monday I too attended the intergovernmental luncheon at Rock and Case. Yeah, John covered, covered it all, pretty much, so. Severe weather that was forecasted for the evening, we received. So I had a blanket of hail and there's various roofers in the neighborhood. So I don't know if I better get my roof checks. Because it came down really hard, small but little.
For like almost 20 minutes straight. I think it's the first time I've ever, I mean, I've seen it rain hail, but not for 20 minutes straight.
Yeah, I took a video of it out of my window. It was just.
Really?
Yeah.
I got like three inches of rain that night.
I had about two and three quarters on the east side over here.
But it was blowing so hard, it probably didn't pick all that up, but anyway. After the, after Monday's meeting, I had an evaluation for water PT at the Via Christie Therapy Center. Apparently it's the only water therapy in the region. And I'm going to be starting that today. And then appointment tomorrow with the doctor. Long haul here, just to figure out what to do.
I'll be seeing a cardiologist on the 15th, I feel your pain.
Well, I'd rather have this pain than that. My mom went through cardiology. Hopefully it worked out for me.
Hopefully we're just checking off boxes, but.
Hopefully, yeah. Uh, let's see, later that afternoon, that was Monday, I attended a presentation on the Marlet Homestead at Seton Hall on K-State campus. A group of students had studied and presented a proposal to revamp and renovate the property that was built and occupied by the Francis Marlet family in the 1800s, really. It's south of the soccer field, has been used for storage for many years. There's a lot of trees there and bushes, so it's kind of hard to see it, but. They had a, they had done a really in-depth study, stood in from interior design, from site plan to floor plans to various, you know, various buildings and estimates for the project. So it was really an interesting presentation. And I want to revamp it, get some money from the university and use it as kind of an event space.
Historical slide, he had a presentation.
Did they?
Couple months ago, that's, I'm sure it's about the same.
Probably the same thing, the seniors really got into it.
They really, yeah. Looked into it.
I did something about that too, and I don't remember. Don't remember where I saw the presentation at.
Well, this one's good. I hadn't, hadn't been in Seton Hall. I've been in parts of it, but boy, I got lost in there. This is so much, so huge. I ended up on the wrong side of Seton Hall to get out of that. Anyway, but let's see, Tuesday, I had a dental appointment for most of the afternoon, which was no fun. Wednesday, I spent time going over today's agenda documents, had a meeting with Wayne Sloan on the RHID proposal. A little kitten. Was interesting. I've known Wayne for quite a while. Later that evening, I practiced with the bell choir at my church, and that's all I've got.
Well, Monday as mentioned, we had the intergovernmental luncheon, presentation by Vicky James on the Food and Farm Council. What, what I liked most was the food recovery program. They've got a lot of, but it collects the extra food from restaurants and caterers and redistributes it to places, you know, shelters and places that can use it, which I think is a really great project. Tuesday was the construction meeting for EMS and the planning for the EM remodel. David Adams had an EMS report later. And the final detail of the emergency management remodel was the storm shelter location and design. This is resolved, so that I can go ahead and proceed, start proceeding with the final design. And then after that, I met with Bryant Parker on a nuisance project, three I've been getting calls on. Pretty consistently. And then I also met with Diane, Preak and Bryant on some health department stuff.
First item, Commissioner, we have a highway use permit for WTC fiber optic.
They really are, yeah.
It's good to see. Go ahead and make a motion to approve the highway use permit, granting WTC permission to complete work as outlined in the ordinance application.
I would second that.
It moved and seconded to approve the highway use permit, granting WTC permission to complete work as outlined in the application. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign.
Snap's are always hard to read, never figure out where they are.
Next, mention the motion on a mobile device reimbursement request form.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve the mobile device reimbursement request form.
I would second that.
It moved and seconded to approve the mobile device reimbursement request form, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next, Commissioner, I have a Riley County employee action form, Nancy Richland, new hire, election day worker, election department. All three of them.
You're getting a few lined up.
Tis the time, tis the time.
Yeah, all your project, isn't it? It's all, all your.
Yeah, it is, because we have.
People leaving.
And depending on the size of the election, like next year we'll need more, you know? The state election will be bigger, so. Never ending process year round. Next, mission, the motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve payment, payroll and accounts payable, all in favor?
All three, please sign. Thanks, Ashlyn.
Need to ask the questions about this, just to, makes your trip over here worthwhile.
Nice girl, we're never coming back.
Yeah, we're pretty scary.
She's a good kid.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any changes from minutes, Commissioner?
Yeah, I will say that I sent my, my notes to Cindy about three times before she actually got them. Once, once from here before we went to the intergovernmental. And then I got home and I had, I hadn't heard, heard from her, she usually sends back. So I sent them from home, she didn't get that yesterday, well, I didn't get a note back from her, so I texted her. Yeah, so I sent her again, she finally got them, so they should show up. Subnet.
Remnants.
It's crazy, yeah, it's just like.
Remnants, technology's great when it works.
Yeah, but you're just lost in the cloud.
Yeah, I was somewhere, I don't know where.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve the minutes as written from the April 28th meeting of Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
It moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 28th meeting of Riley County Commission as presented, all in favor?
Sides long, how did the attending of agendas look?
Long.
Did you change, did she change anything as far as the?
I couldn't tell. Last one was 2:35, the next made it 2:55, I'm going after that.
Well, I have. Pretty neat shape.
Yeah, but she sent that link, because I thought I had to make an adjustment, because Megan is not there. Yeah.
Okay.
Can't find it now, of course.
Yeah, if you have something, just email it to us and we'll take care of it.
Yeah, because I, I just checked emails yesterday.
Any items for next week's press conference? If not, at nine o'clock, Elizabeth Ward, human resources update.
Just trying to schedule, schedule all these PT things.
Oh, they did get Megan on there on the 12th.
Sure, yeah, so I'll get one open, but yeah. That's what I thought, she's. They didn't put her on the end of.
What time? Because I don't have that.
1:55.
Were there any other changes? Because I didn't get them.
Yeah, they moved the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition from the 5th to the 19th, but it's during the meeting.
So I mean, as far as timing goes, nothing's changed except the one.
Yeah.
Or like, see anyway. Technology.
Probably in China by now.
It's pretty breezy today, it looks like. Being out there, living pretty good. Wendy driving back yesterday, oh, only in the first four hours, in the raining, in heavy rain. Taxing is over, home, and then down with the being. There was water on the highway. Yeah. It was not fun driving that first four hours.
The pride, the changes are Barry's at 9:15, Mr. Boulders at? 10:15, that's when yours is?
Well, it's RHIDs and baser, starting to stir.
Is it? And I know there's a couple of school board members in Lansing who quite loud on this one. Not in favor. Well, I mean, this project. They want the full 25 years, and it's like $10 million in incentive.
In baser?
In Lansing.
Lansing.
If you know, I know you know the area well, but, I mean, there's plenty of rebel out, out on western side of both Lansing and Leavenworth, but but 25, I mean.
Well, here's like, I, I told someone here locally, who's a friend of mine. You know, thinks that we have to do it because of the situation, instead you. Like, at the end, you'll collect all that revenue, and I said, but here's the problem, the expenses in between there aren't delayed. The expenses to cover support for those areas aren't delayed.
Yeah.
Somebody has to pay for it. You want a baser? He's that far along, it's already got a big. I've got a niece that lives there.
Yeah.
They've been, there's a, they already. Is there? About a hundred homes, I think.
One of the baser.
Yeah, huge.
That's like almost double the size of the town, yeah.
The other thing with that individual, I think, Chris has said, and you don't understand how much myself and the board here, people concerned about taxes. And, and his, he said, well, people are going to complain about taxes no matter what. So given that, Commissioners, just continue to raise every time, because you're going to complain anyway.
Complaining, well, that's, yeah.
No, I'm the opposite, I'm at the point where for the lowlands can suffer from raising the taxes, it's time to start cutting services. And everybody, everybody, then everybody has to.
Just, what the heck, they're going to complain anyway, so just raise them, I mean.
That's been the mentality here.
I'm, you know, I'm hoping we can do some, some educational stuff for people, so they know you know, why our taxes are higher than other counties, like they talked about last week, they maybe want. I think that, hopefully that will help. People are shocked when they see those numbers.
Like that, oh, you've missed your true story. Is how well we do in this meeting, this county, in particular, with that level of exemption. That's the true.
I explained the opposite, I'm like, imagine what we could do if we had got to that $4.2 million we're missing out on.
Yeah. Leaving the interest on it, maybe we could give interest. Somehow. We did pretty good with. You can, you can have the exemption, but you gotta give us interest. We need good on the ARPA funds.
Yeah, sure.
What they were intended to. A lot of people didn't, tried to do, tried to make do, and we tried, we made.
They tried to use it to balance their budget, and then when you're doing that money's gone, they're finding out.
Yeah.
You gotta raise a mill at the lot.
Cut services or charge for services, really, starting for all their.
Well, it keeps happening to.
Good morning, Commissioner, Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director with my monthly report. So I will just kind of jump in there. Maybe a little bit smaller. Okay, all right, but human resources, people, policy and process, let's see what we can update you on this month. So here's our regular numbers. You can see the head count really is, it's, it's generally remaining the same. Our seasonal and stipend is we're going to see the most movement this time of the year. So we had five hires and over the year, 15 hires, but we also had those separations. And you can see the current year, 47, you guys have seen that come through with the personnel actions and just kind of trying to get prepped up for that next season of elections. Our turnover rate annually, 22.3. So it's, it's going up a little bit, our average tenure, it actually sliding a little bit, but it's 8.8 instead of the full nine, so just rounding there, but in full transparency, it's sliding a little bit. We do have currently. In full transparency, it's sliding a little bit. Um, we do have currently.
Go ahead. It's gone up quite a bit.
The turnover rate has gone up. Yeah.
When it like thirteen, fourteen percent?
Uh, when we, when we presented a while ago, it was fourteen percent and then it's been, it's been kind of creeping and some of that has to do again. With the season. So we do a, a rolling twelve months for the turnover rate. And so we're kind of in a season where we're, we've got both of those, um, cleaning house ton of times when you clean out the volunteers that are no longer participating in January. And then you also clean out the. Um, the election people and it, it, the numbers, number's not, it, it's not a great number. Twenty two percent is not a great.
That's almost a quarter of your entire workforce, but do we really need to add like the seasonal and the volunteers in that?
Get separated out.
We just keep the, the base number because that's, that's not telling the right story overall.
Yeah, we can do that. We, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that was something I really questioned. Yeah.
Uh, it's a good thing to keep an eye on the turnover rate. It doesn't tell the whole story, but it is a good metric to keep an eye on.
Or maybe make the metrics separate. I mean, in the track of volunteers and season also that we know we have or don't have, but separate it from the regular.
Yeah, we do look kind of like those big numbers because you know, you're talking about kind of big groups of the volunteers and the, uh, election workers.
That turnover rate includes the volunteer.
It does. Yeah.
Didn't show anything.
Yeah, it's really.
Yeah, that was the reason for my question last month. That's exactly what I asked. That, I mean, I agree. I don't think the elections and volunteer firefighters should be in there.
Yeah.
But I think something else to keep in mind, because that percentage is still content is going to be higher than what we traditionally had is. Have a large amount that are eligible to retire and a large amount that have been retiring. Just look at all the retirements we've gone to. So that, that goes into that as well. So it's not just people leaving for somewhere else. You have to keep in mind.
Well, maybe that's a good metric to track on its own as well.
Great. Michelle, would you take, take a little note of that too?
You know, you could put. The fact that you could put how many retire.
I was just going to say that, yeah, because we have had an unusual amount of people retiring. So just to give you a little bit more in-depth knowledge of what that number means, I think.
Put a separate turnover rate on the other ones. Like I said, the election people, I know you have.
Same thing with volunteer.
Back to back meetings where there was like eight and nine and so.
Excuse.
Yeah, we could have another chart for that.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. No, I give you a little bit more understanding of what those numbers actually mean. Yeah. Yeah. Great. No, I mean, I love that because I, I present these things, but I need it to be useful to you.
Well, I mean, even on this slide here, you look at that and you said, well, you have one separation in April twelfth of the year, but your turnover rate's twenty two point three. I mean, it's kind of contradictory, you know?
Well, I'll tell you that is contradictory because right now we're doing current year, but the average tenure and the average tenure and the turnover rate are twelve months. Sorry. I'm like doing my monitoring presenting thing. I want to like go up there and point it out to you. I apologize. So yeah, so we're doing current year, but we're doing a twelve month rolling. It's really how you have to do. Well, you don't have to. You can do it any way you want, as long as we're talking the same language. So I could change the turnover to current year as well, or I could change the separations to a.
Roll over is fine, but just separating the volunteer, the. On the right hand side.
And you have separated that out by saying annual on the turnover rate.
I have. Yeah.
Current year on separation.
You just have to track it. Yeah, absolutely. And then you'll notice I have six current openings and what I'm presenting to you, there are a couple on the website that are. Still open advertised, but they have, um, an offer out. They have an acceptance and we're waiting literally just for the onboarding or the start date. So, um, to give you a really good idea of what we have actually open is, um, six positions and they're in public works, parks and a razor. Um, we have some really great things happening that I cannot wait to, for you to see the, the employee action forms on, on some of those, some really exciting positions being filled. Um, okay. So we. Last month you guys approved the F L R P and the NACO High Performing Leaders Program. So we're accepting applications for that.
Got a pretty good shout out for that, that Commissioners Association.
Oh, nice. Good. Good. That's great. Um, so yeah, so we're accepting applications. We're still doing the supervisor training, the highly effective managers, planning the employee day. Um, and then onboarding committee, I am, I can't tell you how excited I am for their proposal. Uh, they have some really neat things that are going to be, um, engaging that they are still talking about in committee. So not at the point yet where they're ready to propose it to, to either the department heads or you, but looking at really trying to. Bring people into the fold and keep them engaged throughout their employment. So we do, so we can lower that turnover, right? Um, I also forgot to put on the slide, but, um, yesterday I presented at K C C E O A. So the, the clerks and elections. Yeah. I had to, I had to write it down, but yeah, the clerks and elections and we did H R one O one and it was really well received. They actually. Put me in a smaller room up above because they thought, well, I don't know. Does anybody, is anybody excited about H R? Uh, but we had standing room only. It filled the whole room, really great interaction. And I was asked to come and present at least one other county. To their department heads, you know, it's a lot of clerks don't have, uh, H R or they maybe have a, a payroll clerk. And so just kind of giving them an overview of what their responsibilities are. And then, uh, Michelle and I are signed up for mental health, first aid training. Um, so I think that's going to be really good. I've done that in the past. It's been years ago, but you know, we have. That is an employee concern. Um, so from the employer perspective, how we can respond and surprise, provide support for anyone who is, you know, maybe they're having issues that are affecting them at work. Um, so performance development, we've been working with EMS. They would like to propose a three sixty five evaluation. So like, um, coming from the bottom to the top and maybe peer to peer. We're still in the discussion stage. Josh has written up a, a kind of an idea of how that would work. And so we'll see, we, the other departments have talked about that in the past. Um, just kind of put it on your radar that they're, they would like to do that. And at the very minimum, um, top to bottom and bottom up. So like from the, uh, employee to the supervisor. And I know like Greg, you and I have talked about that in the past too, some value there. Um, you know, the, the, the difficult is just making sure that everybody feels like safe and secure that they can. They can communicate and professional, right? I mean, it doesn't help us just to complain. So we're, we're working on that. I think it could be a cool tool and I think their leadership there is, is open to getting some criticism. So that might help. Um, Michelle did two sessions of F M L A training for the supervisors, particularly in health department, which we offer on kind of a rotating basis. You know, it's something. That supervisors really are key in because they, they know what the employees are going through and legally when the, when the supervisor knows about an F M L A. Uh, covered issue or potentially F M L A covered issue, the law believes that the organization knows. So we need to make sure that they know. Uh, what to do and how to get that over to H R and get that process for the employee. And. K C H R A is offering the supervisor training on June twelfth and I'm part of that, that group. Um, we have fourteen Riley County supervisors registered and in the past we've had really good response from that. Um, so I think that's exciting. I think I have a. Little here, there's a little flyer. So we'll be doing F M L A, ADA harassment, um, and how to be the boss without being bossy. So. Some good tools for supervisor levels. And then the last thing is we've got to, we've got some proposals or some ideas. Um, to restructure the annual performance reviews. I mean, some of the things we've already talked, Rich is smiling. He's heard this before. Um, so a really good conversation.
Changed twenty times because no one likes them on either side.
Well, some of the stuff we've already known and we tried to fix last year. So like having one through six with six being N A. It doesn't math, it doesn't math right. So it pulls people in a different direction. Um, and we thought. They obviously had that taken care of, but it, it did not work out this last year. And then also the conversation came up in the highly effective leadership program. And it was quite a few. Of the supervisors from the health department that really were like, well, we. We would like it to be useful. We'd like it to be helpful. And here's some ideas. So, so looking at some things there that we can bring up to you and see. You and the, uh, department heads, right? And there are people using it. So, uh, Michelle continues on the capers advisory council, um, and continuing to look at how capers can be more relevant and more competitive. Um, compared with, you know, all of our competition, both private and public. And, um. Also then, um, offering Medicare basics to all of our employees. Extension is going to present this. And so we're hoping that people within that five year. Window of thinking about retirement will come. So it'll be June eleventh. Um, we'll have two, we'll have one in public works in the morning and one, um, here in the office building at noon.
So what's kind of the direction of the capers? I mean, I've got a great one. So it's not like concern of mine, but it's a great recruiting tool for local.
Michelle, do you want to just come up and give a little update like you?
They were going one direction. I sent them maybe they changed directions. I think the board probably like to know.
So yeah, they, um, had talks in the legislative to, um, go back potentially to capers two. Um, but I think that's been mixed. Um. They kind of put that on the back burner just because of the cost of what capers could be.
That's, that's the key. I think they want to go back to two, but with the snake shortfalls, uh, being predicted in twenty seven and twenty eight, I made them rethink it.
Well, now they're thinking about a different plan. It's called CRIS. Um, but it would allow employees to elect to, or they would automatically be enrolled in a. Uh, deferred compensation. And if they don't want to be in it, then they can go back to capers three. And, and they'll allow capers one, why they would want to or two, to go into the deferred if they wanted or stay where they're at. It's just ideas and other ideas that they're doing. Again, they're not going to talk about it until next year. Um, they put it on the back burner again, but they have a lot of different ways. They keep on going back and forth, but to convert people. Um, back to two, the costs is a lot and as capers three grows, the more the cost it would be to convert back. So.
Which is why they started three to begin with, that two was costing. They still, I know they've been putting more money into capers each year to try to get, they got it. Cause it was way under.
Right. It's not balanced, right? It's not even, yeah.
Know they've been. Even some, use some of their extra.
Seventy seven or eighty percent or something funded.
Yeah, they didn't go over those exact things.
I know it was way, now like fifty or sixty percent.
Funded. So let alone trying to make it up a little bit more competitive.
Yeah.
And I think that to Rich's point, I mean, that's kind of our concern is we're not competitive comparing to other private industry now. And so that's. That's, that's going to be an issue with us for retention as well and recruitment. All right. So just to quickly go through the, uh, rest here. I know, I think I'm two minutes over. So. We actively recruited for ten physicians this month. We reviewed three hundred and seventy applications and we have been through the process of hiring twenty one people. Um, our average time to fill is thirty eight point seven five days. That took out all, I took out the volunteers and the evergreen physicians on that. We have conducted a hundred and ten interviews in April. Um, we had thirty eight onboarding events, which took approximately forty nine hours of H R time. And, um, employee relations are mentoring. So those are things that we do with the departments, with the supervisors, potentially one-on-one with the employees, thirty three hours or thirty three. Not necessarily event. Some of them are more than an hour. Um, some compliance such. Situations that would ensure that Riley County is compliant, three events, performance actions. I'm really happy to say only four events in the month. So that's kind of our, our discipline or having a conversation on performance improvement. And we updated five positions this month, which you all saw. Driver T D Q, that's our, um, C D L driver overview. So that is how we get people registered with the, with D O T and ensure that they're compliant. Everyone is now registered. We took the employment law series, um, uh, four weeks and really great, really some really interesting stuff on. Paid leave and also particularly on position descriptions. So hopefully we can implement some of that. Um, continued to work on nine forty ones and, um. I think we might have that solved. We'll see if that is resolved. Um, F M L A filing, transferring the fire department personnel files, monitoring those policy changes that we're seeing at the, mostly at the federal level. Um, and I do not have an updated committee report for you. I apologize, but I will be that to you. Um, I did get, start getting those advisory boards as you had asked. And so get that to you. Kind of quick there at the end, but anything, any questions or anything else? All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Bowler at nine fifteen, Commissioners.
Hi Barry, how you doing? Session. That's exactly.
Oh, it is? Oh, that's right. It's the one you changed, right?
Yeah, it's one of them changed. I just showed up rich in case of the chin wouldn't make. Did Vivian know?
Did Vivian get them though?
Ryan, did you let Vivian know about all these changes?
Um, I.
Here she comes running. Going the full time, Ryan, until nine thirty.
You need to make that motion.
Okay, I was gonna say, we need to make the motion first. Okay. Um, I'll move that the county commissioners, including Chairman Fort, McKinley, excuse me, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford with Barry Wilkerson, County Attorney. Recess into executive session on performance matter of non-elected personnel, an exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. For the purpose of discussing the work conduct of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee in the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at nine thirty A M.
I would second that.
The mood and seconded for the county commission to recess into executive session. Reason previously stated under the performance matter of non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When new and seconded, the board of county commissioners met executive session all in favor.
I also knew that the record reflect actions shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
I would second that.
When new and seconded, the record reflect actions should be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session. All in favor?
I agree.
Good morning, Commissioners. Anna Burson with the Riley County Appraisers Office here to give you our monthly staff update. Uh, let me just zoom that out just a little bit so you can see a little better. So, personal property also more commonly referring to as our appraisal support team. Um, the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five values have been sent out on personal property. Uh, those notice of values went out on the twenty ninth and property owners have till May fifteenth to appeal. Um, we have transitioned to, um, the staff fully managing our digital process for the various residential. And so that's why, um, we were referring to our front end staff more as our support team because they are assisting on a lot of our residential phases. Preparing for upcoming legislative changes as well as they pertain to personal property and a lot of training. It's that time of year where we're sending staff to training. Um, our ag appraiser, um, she's working through sales on ag land as we're receiving them. Verifying agricultural use on properties who failed to return their ag questionnaires that went out, uh, last year. All appeals involving farm home sites or ag use classification have been completed.
Question on that. You said they have the until April or it's been out on.
May fifteenth. It's a much shorter timeframe on personal property.
But I tell you, in North County, our mail isn't, can take a week.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know if that.
The, the post office is.
But.
Yeah.
Because it's gotten, I mean, it can take a long time from something to go from here to Riley for some reason.
That portion's out of our control. Um, statutorily, we sent, we have to mail it out. Um, by the, by that date, by May first, actually, we still mailed it out a little earlier. Most jurisdictions are mailing out on May first and they have till the fifteenth to appeal. And so, um, again, it's legislative and I just don't, yeah, yeah.
If it's gotten bad.
Certainly, if anybody has some questions regarding not receiving it or concerns, they can call our office and we'll be happy to assist them or provide them any information that they, they would like to know. On the residential side, two hundred and thirteen residential sales to date. Uh, the median sale price is sitting right around that two forty eight seven, um, and the average sale price is two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety seven. Uh, currently, that sales ratio for unvalidated sales is at ninety seven percent. Again, sales remain unvalidated until after we certify in June. There are a hundred and twenty eight new permits for twenty twenty five and two hundred and eighty six approximately permits for rechecks from twenty twenty four. The residential teams begun our annual review phase and they're final, we are finalizing our twenty twenty five valuation decisions as it relates to informal appeals. We have two pending small claims hearings regarding twenty twenty four valuation and three pending small claims hearings regarding the twenty twenty five valuation decisions that have already been made. Um, on commercial, uh, the commercial team's working through the annual, um, the annual review. As they're finalizing informal appear, appeals and preparing for the BOTA hearings, there are ten commercial sales to date. Um, for twenty twenty five informal appeal summary, four hundred and forty appeals total, eleven ag commercials, forty six, eleven farm sites, three hundred and thirteen residential and fifty nine vacants. All appeals, all appeals have been held. And final decisions have been made on just over sixty four percent. When I ran these numbers earlier, um, it was right around, um, sixty four percent earlier this week, but we've closed down a lot since then. Our target date for certifying real property is May fifteenth. Um, with the statutory certification required June first. Here is the updated BOTA list for real estate. Um, there's really no change to the list on, um, those BOTA cases, as you can see, just scheduling. Um, nothing really new, um, to report on this at this time. I know that the target hearing is coming up, so that one's at the end of the month, just as an FYI, um, we are preparing for that.
Was the, uh, that, what is it, twenty eighteen?
No news.
No news.
No news on the eighteen Home Depot yet.
I've had several people ask me about that.
Yeah, still waiting. As soon as, as I have information on that, I will happily let you guys know.
I know it's gonna take place at some point in time, but.
Yes.
Um, roughly how far behind is BOTA right now?
On, on exemptions, two years behind. On hearings, as far as like residential, they're really quickly getting those scheduled. Commercial, it's just a much longer timeline. I really can't speak to that. The last time I talked to the board, it sounded like they're, they're doing, they're in a better place and they're getting some things caught up. So hopefully, um, hopefully we won't be too backlogged.
I just, I get asked those questions on occasion.
Absolutely. Yep.
The list has gotten a lot shorter.
Yes.
Or our list has gotten a lot shorter.
Our, our list has gotten shorter and we're gonna hope it stays that way, um, regarding pending exemption applications. And so the, the things to report on here is the two safe farm, which you guys already got that tax, um, uh, abatement document. So those two are now, um, completed. Additionally, the IRB on sixteen or nineteen sixty Kimball, that one was approved. And so that one moved a little quicker because the IRB process is slightly different. Um, they already had a docket number, um, because they have to, I, I don't exactly understand all of the steps they have to take, but they had a docket number on the application when it was submitted to me. And so that one has also been completed. And so we have got those now listed as exempt. Um, and so those will be removed from the valuation prior to certification on those properties for twenty twenty five. Additional projects, budgets, open positions, um, we, with hearings, um, it made it challenging to hold interviews, but we have worked in times and we held some interviews. And we're hopeful to have both of the positions filled here in the near future. Um, hearings and training, like I said, that's really been what was, what's been going on a lot in those last couple months, or last, yeah, last couple months. Uh, legislation is another really, really big thing. I think it's important to keep you guys informed of. Um, there was House Bill twenty two thirty one, which goes into effect January, uh, first twenty twenty six essentially. Uh, grants exemption to personal property, uh, watercraft, marine equipment, off-road vehicles, motorized bicycles and certain trailers. And so just kind of as an idea, so you're aware of it. Um, when we certified personal property values in May of twenty twenty four, the total valuation of personal property was fifty five million, nine hundred and sixty seven thousand, six hundred and ninety five dollars. That changes throughout the year because property, personal property, a lot of it can be abated on and off the tax roll as it's sold. And so, um, watercraft made up just over eight point five million of that. And other, like the trailers, all of those other things I mentioned, it was roughly two point five million. And so overall, in a praise, it's about eleven million, one hundred and sixty two thousand ish, just looking at the numbers from twenty twenty four. That when we, um, go to start doing budgets in twenty twenty seven for twenty twenty seven, we're not going to have that amount of personal property because it becomes exempt. And so I just wanted you to have a heads up since we're, you know, talking budgets and things to think about. This is an exemption and it would be, uh, the state's still working on guidance on how we will implement the, implement the change. Um, but we will work through those challenges and, um, as we typically do.
So what, you said it was between the two of them?
Roughly eleven million, just, just over eleven million.
That's, that's, right, what's their, wha- what do they charge or what?
The assessment rate on, I think the largest portion of it's thirty percent. So it has a higher assessment rate because it's personal property. Um, tax breakdown, I don't have all of that information. Really, the appraised value portion of it was, this is just a ballpark figure. It could be higher and lower depending upon what gets abated on or added or.
Higher because everything will be reevaluated by the time we get to the next.
Yeah, the valuation on personal property went up between the May and October timeframe, but we don't recertify different times of the year. And so it will just depend on what's on the tax roll when we go to remove everything.
Will be technically worth more when we get to twenty seven than it is in twenty six, right?
Not, I mean, not necessarily. It depends on if the value's gone up on the type of personal property it is. Sometimes the values go down because they're depreciating out more. So the personal property is a little different. And so it's, it's really, it's really hard to give a accurate figure. That's why it's just more of a ballpark, just to give you the heads up. With over fifty five million currently, roughly eleven, a little over eleven million based on what we have now. Um, well, from May of twenty four, um, we'll see a shift. So any other questions for me? Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Anna.
Yep.
Thanks for sharing, Bob. I was at nine forty five. Robert, how you doing?
Pretty good, hey, Rich? Um, that, that last Monday, I was wondering if I could get you to get that, just laying out here. Yeah, the Sharpies kinda eh.
You don't need to use a stamp, you gotta spell it all out. Make your stamp doing that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that kind of started, you know, started and started again. Make sure right here.
Does Ellerman come in later today?
Who?
John Ellerman. He's on, is he on the agenda?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, is he?
Oh, yeah, he is.
Okay.
Press for qualification.
New tie tack. Ah, yeah, of course. One of his favorite cartoon characters.
Oh, he loves Taz. Yeah, we've had a whole.
What's that?
Didn't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Conversation about that time, I feel, right?
I had a Taz tie I was gonna give him and then I looked at it because it was older.
And you said, I'm keeping it.
Yeah, I said, well, I'm keeping it because it was my dad's, but also I'm like, we need something newer. And so this was like four bucks on Amazon and I'm like, this has John Ellerman's name all over it.
He's wearing Taz ties one.
Well, he knew, because we went, we went up to Public Works, Jake and I, and had a meeting, so he knew the tie tack was coming in today.
Okay, well, he's got a Taz tie.
Warms my heart. Thanks for swapping, Mike.
Oh, no problem at all. I just thought I might, I got to think this morning, I thought.
You just wanted to come down and hang out with us midline, Mike. I know the feeling sometimes.
Bob? I'm sorry. Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Uh, Carson and Shelby Lang have made application with Riley County, Riley County Planning and Development requesting to rezone unplanted tract of land from AG Agricultural District to SF one, single family residential in order to build a house. The subject property is generally located approximately five hundred and fifty feet west of Tuttle Creek Boulevard on the south side of North Forty Eighth Street in Wildcat Township. That looks familiar. It's just west of Prairie Stone.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The four point eight acre unplanted tract has been vacate or vacant since approximately two thousand and eighteen. But the home located on the property burned down. The applicant, uh, checked with staff to see if a home could be built to replace the former house. But unfortunately, because the home was destroyed prior to the adoption of the land development regulations in twenty twenty two, the home itself was not made conforming and therefore could not be replaced in the current zoning district. Further, a lot of record, a lot of record determination found that the track was not grandfathered in, uh, by the previous regulations. Thus, a lease was completed and it's in score high enough that the applicant decided to move forward with a petition to re, rezone the property in order to build a house. So as you can see here, the property, uh, is shown in gray, is currently zoned, uh, agricultural and has been zoned agricultural since about nineteen fifty eight. There are no variances, conditional uses or special uses associated with the site. Uh, the, the applicant is proposing to rezone the property, uh, to single family residential district that will match the other single family residential designations in the area, which is designated by the darker green. Riley County Fire District number one will serve the site. The nearest county fire station is the Tuttle Creek Fire Station located at forty one twenty highway thirteen. The subject site is located within five road miles of a fire station. Uh, according to the most recent Flint Hills joint land use study, the subject site is located within the event use planning zone shown in blue. That's your top half of the slide here. Um, officials from Fort Riley have reported that, according to Fort Riley's, uh, installation operational noise management plan of two thousand and fifteen, noise sensitive land uses such as housing, schools, medical facilities, churches, et cetera, are generally acceptable within the L U P Z. The property is subject to the notice of potential noise impacts in Fort Riley, Kansas, military installation and recommended noise attenuating attenuation building methods recorded August seventeenth, twenty twenty, the office registered deeds. So the request was reviewed with the twenty fifteen Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. That study area for that comprehensive plan expands all the way out to this location. Uh, the subject site is located within the northwest planning area. Uh, the future land use map indicates that the subject site is projected for rural residential use. According to table three, one, uh, in the plan, rural residential lots tracks are typically between two and twenty acres in size, although some tracks may exceed twenty acres. Uh, characteristics of rural residential include typically found in rural, rural settings on the urban fringe. Uh, lot size and layout varies and typically not served by urban utilities. Uh, this, I believe, are going to have, uh, um, rural water, I believe so. That's right. And it will be served by an onsite wastewater lagoon. Staff analysis, the request is in conformance with the plan as it was projected for ru- rural residential use. Request was also reviewed with the two thousand and nine Vision twenty twenty five Riley County Comprehensive Plan, specifically the Development Guidance System of Chapter twelve. Although the subject property is located outside of a designated growth area, it scored, uh, four thousand, four hundred and seventy five points on the LISA, which is the upper end of the scale of moderate for development. Um, near, nearly strong for development. Um, so no bonus points were factored into that analysis either. So staff analysis, the request, uh, to rezone the subject property is consistent with the goals and objectives of the plan. So this is the site plan. Uh, I wanted to point out that typically when there's a, a rezoning, uh, a site plan is not required. But in this particular case, it was not being plotted. And, uh, because of its location to, uh, existing or proposed, uh, agricultural operations surrounding it, uh, agricultural buffer was required along the west edge of the property and along the south edge. Uh, the reasoning for the agricultural buffer is the, in anticipation of the active agricultural operation occurring on the track that busts the subject property, but the, uh, agricultural exemption for the house was recently approved in conjunction with the anticipated cattle pasturing operations for the property south of this track. So in order to provide some protection from the anticipated farming practices, uh, while still allowing the structures on the lot to be used for habitation, uh, including the proposed residence, uh, the planning board approved a reduction of the required agricultural buffer from two hundred feet to fifty feet along the west line and a reduction from two hundred feet to one hundred feet along the south property line. And the site plan is going to be used to document, officially document that and, uh, track that the, that those buffers are in place. The rezoning. So a few pics of the site. This is, uh, standing on, uh, the, at the intersection of North Forty Eighth Street, the existing driveway to the site, looking south westerly across the northwest corner of the lot. And that's a relatively recent build here on the adjacent track. And it's kind of turning to my left. This is the entrance into the site here. And as you can tell, there's some trees and old, old seeders that are, are being cleared from the site now. The, uh, the proposed drive or the existing driveway, it will serve the site. There's no plan for a, a different location of the driveway, so they simply use the same one. And just turning a little bit more to my left, looking southeasterly along, uh, across the northeast corner of the subject site. Again, there's a few mature trees lining the east line of the property, providing some screening between the subject site and the neighboring landscaping business, ironically. On April fifteenth, the Riley County Planning Board heard the request and unanimously afforded recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners based on reasons listed in the staff report. And the planning board also approved the request to reduce the required agricultural buffer distance from two hundred feet to fifty feet along the west property line and the reduction of two thousand or two hundred feet to one hundred feet along the south property line. Staff recommendation or is, is staff recommends that the plan for it, Board of County Commissioners approved the request to rezone the subject property from AG Agricultural District to SF one single family residential, as it has been determined that it is, uh, in conformance with the comprehensive plan and meets the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and Riley County Sanitary Code. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any other questions, well, yeah, I'd be glad to be able to.
Yeah. I'll go ahead then and make a motion to sign resolution zero five zero one two five. We could get the other numbers on this.
We assign those later.
Okay, that's what I was.
As soon as we assign a number, then it doesn't get approved and so it's in numerical order for the year.
Okay, I was just curious about that from last.
That's why.
Are you talking about this case at the end?
Yeah.
That's why.
I just didn't know if we don't put that number in or what the rationale behind that was. It just popped into my brain when we did the one last week, but anyway, not, not relevant. Um, but that would be approving the request to rezone an unplanted tract of land from AG Agricultural District to SF dash one, single family residential and associated development site.
I would second that.
Then moved and seconded to sign resolutions zero five zero one two five, approving the request to rezone an unplanted tract of land from AG to SF one and associated development site plan. All in favor?
Aye.
All three please, sign. My one, yep.
No.
My one, no.
No, oh.
It's a, it's a different one.
Oh, okay.
There's so many things.
Lots of change in pace.
Yeah.
Signs.
It's funny.
That's for you.
Yeah.
Yes, I guess that's why they did it, I'm assuming.
Okay. Here's some extra sticky notes.
Uh, we have plenty. She recycled them all on her desk because like this, it works so. You do a good job of recycling.
I guess so.
We saved the county money that way.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of money. Especially, I mean, they stay sticky, right?
They do.
We've got a whole another sheet this time.
On the back.
Oh, didn't have a tab. As I said, there's always at least two on this.
Oh, there it is. Resolution, it was on.
Never get off that easy.
I think she probably meant to put one of those stamps.
Must have.
Yeah.
Probably slipped.
Sticky companies aren't putting sticky stuff on there to save money, that's what it is. Let's saw picture of like the McDonald's Big Mac from like the nineteen eighties compared to now.
Geez, I've seen that.
Like this big and now it's like this big and they charge like five dollars more and it's like, man, wonder why we're not getting anywhere.
What I've also seen is a similar, uh, picture of a guy who preserved one from like ten years ago and says, see how much it hasn't changed and it didn't change much.
Oh, I know.
So you know what they're putting in there and you keep it to look that way?
Yeah.
The chemicals. That'll make you think twice.
It's got a half life of five hundred years, I think we need it. Leave that one alone. The fries are still good, though.
Those last fifty years.
No, no, I, that'd probably make you really sick.
Suddenly I have no appetite for fast food, not that I did before.
I don't either. I don't eat fast food at all.
So I'm starting a new hobby of making my own animals at home. Beef.
Oh, bacon.
I think I'm gonna bring out my fryer over the weekend and fry some turkeys and chickens.
Anything at your place.
Well, my neighbors do. They've got chickens over there. I hear them at four o'clock in the morning.
Terrible chickens. I can't, they don't belong in town.
Well, their backyards aren't even big enough for those things to roam around.
Probably.
It could be.
Wait till it starts snowing, the summer, then you're gonna have a lot of fun. I have that at my house.
I mean, the regulations say no roosters, but we were down. Number, at least from church on points. Looking at a job, masonry, you could hear the roost, there's a rooster right next door.
Right there.
Yeah.
Keep them inside, maybe.
Yeah. One funny thing from Monday night storm, I was looking at the window when it was hailing. I happened to look underneath my truck and there was a whole family rab- rabbiting. Kind of taking shelter.
Smart, get out of the water. My, my blooming flowers really took a beating. But they're starting to come back. I mean, there were more blooms.
Our irons. Yeah, ours are really pretty right now.
Mine were till the hail hit. Yeah.
It smells so good.
Oh, wow.
Get some bright yellow ones. And there's peach colored one, I think, that's all, but haven't, they haven't been in. There's yellow ones.
Old abandoned farms sitting next to my property to the north and obviously there's the house there and there are tons of yellow and purple ones that they come up each year.
Even those, there's always a row iris.
Peonies.
We had peonies on the lawn.
Good.
Amanda.
All right. Good morning Commissioners. Amanda Webb, Planning Director here with Planning and Development's monthly staff update. Um, as we do, we'll start with keys. We have been doing lots behind the scenes. Um, we, of course, just want to talk again about, um, the USDA funding awards, that grant and loan that, that we received. Um, there's a long list of conditions we're working through just to provide documentation and stuff to, to USDA to, to meet all of that and finalize, um, that award. Um, so everything's, we, we've had meetings with them and everything's going along just fine with that. Kansas Water Office, that technical assistance grant we received, um, I just submitted the latest, um, quarterly report and got confirmation that everything was received and they'll work on our reimbursement. And got confirmation that everything was received and they'll work on our reimbursement, so that's been going really smoothly. Um you know, getting getting the reports into them and the reverse reimbursement's coming out and they've been really, really helpful, so I appreciate them. Um K D H E, that um grant that they have um awarded Keats, um we met with. Um K D H E staff a couple of weeks ago, just to kind of talk about, because because really we don't need this particular grant until the construction is starting. Um so we still got a little bit of time, so they just wanted to check in with us just to see, you know, what's the status, how how's everything going? We've been keeping them updated, giving them, you know, documentation and whatnot as as they need, so everything's still going along fine with that. Let's see, the schedule should still be pretty much as is the easement documentation that we need to collect. We'll probably take a little bit further into the summer than originally anticipated, but we are actively working on it. Um I believe USDA needs it by August and that that won't be a problem, so we are working through all of that. And um everything else with the schedule is as is, I haven't heard any changes at this point. We're planning to hold another community meeting, we haven't um nailed down the schedule yet, there's a few things, again, we're working on internally, wanting to make sure. We have everything ready to go and all the information ready to um give to them. And you know, be clear on what we need from them for us. Um so probably somewhere in the mid-June range is kind of what we're looking at, we'll we'll get out there into the community. Um give a status update, talk about where we're at, and then talk about the easements and all of that, so. Um we're we're keeping them updated and and um have received some emails from from the residents, you know, just kind of checking in. Whatnot, which I really appreciate, so um everything's going along just fine with that, again, there's a lot of um behind the scenes work. What I like to call it, basically just staff working on a whole bunch of things, so um definitely keeping busy with Keith, so.
Yeah, the uh the easement documents, you might go over that, you know, what we need to get as far as the easements. And what they're for.
You you want to talk about that now?
You know, it's probably a good idea to, you know, why we need to get all these easement documents.
Yeah, so of course, of course, the easement and Bryant, please feel free to jump in since it's legal stuff, you know, way more than I do. Um basically, of course, the the permanent easements we need are for the the components that are going to be running on private property. Most of it is going to be kept in county right of way and and in the street and whatnot. But the reality is with with these kinds of things, we do have to run through, run some of the components, some of the lines through people or property. Um BG has spent a lot of time over the last several months. Figuring out alignments that work best for the projects, keeping costs down and to be as little impact as possible to property owners. We they've met with um property owners, they've knocked on doors, they've talked to people on site. They've really tried to be and as have we, you know, really communicative about how these are going to work and why we need them and all of that. And really, the why is again to to extend the lines out to everybody, we can't. Just with with some of the topo and some of the other limitations, we can't only go in the streets. It it just, some of it just works better. To have to go a little bit through some some folks' property. And again, everybody who's going to need one of those should have been talked to, um if not, again, we're we're going to keep keep people informed. When we have our meeting scheduled in June, when we know what that timeframe is going to be. Um the letters that I send out will have that information with it, we're going to include the easement documentation that they'll need, so they could review it. Ask us questions ahead of time, we have some other documentation as required by USDA and K D H E to provide to folks. Um in terms of that, and then again, this meeting will also be about. Really explaining, really helping to people, people to understand what these are, why we need them, you know, what we need from them and how it will impact them. Um we'll also need temporary easements, and that's going to be for everybody, basically just to be able to go and go on their site to actually do the work. So and that's um again, part of this process is we're hooking everybody up. So if you have existing um wastewater components, all of that's getting decommissioned as part of the project that's already factored into the cost. And the um again, the project scope. Um and we're hooking you up, so we will take lines to directly to your home or the structure that needs. The service is all part of the pro uh the project. So of course, we'll need temporary easements from everybody in order to that they know and allow us to go on site in order to perform the work, basically.
Couple, just a couple of real pragmatic notes on these easements. On the permanent ones. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think darn near all of them are at the very edges of the property, right? And about the only thing you really can't do in a permanent easement for sewer work, right, there's some jurisdictions that get picky. About, oh, don't put a fence in, but. I imagine, I'm just gonna throw this out there, I don't think anybody's gonna have a lot of heartburn with sewer line that's, you know, gonna be there for fifty years if there's. Some fences that are put in, the only thing you really shouldn't do is put a building over the top of it, that would be bad. Right, but and then for the temporary easements, right? It's, it makes K D H E, and I'm sure the USDA happy if we call them a temporary easement instead of a license, but basically it's just a promise. That yeah, we're gonna come in and install, and if we do damage, we'll make it right. That's it, I mean.
It's just one of the many components of the project, you know, to to get this done, so. Um let's see, so yes, so that will be the subject of um our next meeting, and then again, just a general. Also as to, you know, what what the lines are looking like and kind of where we are on things, so I'll keep you updated on that, we should hopefully know. Basically, it's we're working to get the easement documents put together, and that just takes a little bit of internal time. So we want to make sure we have all of that ready before, both before we schedule a meeting and then also before we. Mail any notifications out to property owners, because we want to include all of that information to them. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to determine um a meeting date for that. Um and get all that arranged, and I'll keep myself updated, of course. All right, so next item, our comprehensive plan update, we've of course talked a lot about this, but I'm going to keep talking about it, of course. The community workshop is scheduled for May fourteenth, Potter Fall, six P M. Um Stan Tech is going to go over the existing condition study that they have submitted to, and I think I mentioned this to you folks earlier this week. They have submitted that to us um to Planning Development. We're um internally reviewing it, making sure everything looks okay, we'll get comments back to them by tomorrow. They'll do some updates based on whatever needs updating, and then that that study will be released publicly. As soon as possible, as soon as they turn those um updates back around to us, we're going to get that out there. Um and then we want to do that in advance of the May fourteenth meeting, but that is the subject of the May fourteenth meeting, basically. So we'll talk about the existing condition study, and as I told you earlier in the week, we're gonna do a few activities as well.
I wrote Potter Fall at six P M on that date and couldn't figure out what. I I didn't know, I was just gonna show up and be surprised, I guess, but I'll try to. There's so much going on in May, I can't, I can't keep track of all of it.
Um let's see, Redab, our Rural Economic Development Advisory Board, thanks to all three of you who are able to attend individual. Individual meetings over the last um few months, we got a lot of really great discussion, really great helpful input from all of you. Um so I'm going to be um compiling everything that we got. And then um where we have to adjust our main meeting schedule, usually we meet on the third Wednesday, we're actually going to meet on the fourth Tuesday. Just we got some other stuff going on, so we just need to change that date. Um and so we'll go over everything that we collected from you folks and then use that to kind of figure out what, you know, kind of some of the next steps. And of course, keep you, keep you updated and make sure you're comfortable with all of that. Um and also, as I've mentioned before, they are going to be getting um draft goals for the economic development. Um section of our comp plan, they'll get some draft goals and we'll talk about all of that as well. So they can give us some input on those, especially from the um rural perspective um for for county economic development, so. Um moving along, the Solid Waste Management Committee, um as you know, we just um reviewed the solid waste management plan. As we were required by K D H E to do annually. You folks, you folks approved that um review earlier this week, and we're going to get that sent up to K D H E for their final approval. It's due at the end of this month, but we will have that um transmitted to them in the next week or so. We have to send them um a hard copy, because every time I try to send it to them electronically, it doesn't like it, because of course it has. It's solid waste, so some, there's some health related stuff in there, there's some things that the computer thinks is HIPAA. So I can't transfer it on the computer, so it goes in the mail, but not a big deal, we we get that done, so. The other item, we're gearing up for Riley County Fair, which seems like it's a ways away, but it's really not, it'll be here in just a few months. Um so the group has done that the last couple of years and felt good about that, so we're gonna just keep doing it. And I'm getting a member signed up for for to host the booth. Um and then we are also working on updating um the portions of the Riley County website that have to do with solid waste. We have a solid waste management committee webpage, you know, on on the Riley County, um you know, web website or whatnot. It's just very little, there's very little to it, and I think there can be more. Um more information provided, kind of more of a central location, we got, we have a lot of great informations kind of spread around a bit. But kind of having that committee information, just a little bit more beefed up with with what's currently on there, kind of more of what we do, how people can get involved. The plan is is located on there as well, and of course, our membership and what we do, but we're really wanting to get kind of more information in the central location there. So people can really better understand what that committee does, what we're about, how we meet, all of that. Because we do have a couple of vacancies um that we really do need to fill and we've been working on, it's just been really hard um to get people, you know. Um in involved in that, and we thought that having, you know, a central location for more information, and again, really more in depth about what we do. Might might help with that, so we're working on that. Um L E P P grant, the Local Envir- Environmental Protection Program grant that we've been working on since last June. Um our second round of applications, um that window closes this coming Monday. I've received five applications so far, um I will say at least a couple of them aren't income eligible, but we're waiting until. Um May fifth to see all of the different applications we received, so we can evaluate them and compare them with each other. I've gotten a couple that I do have some questions about, not so much income eligibility, but project eligibility. So I'm going to be meeting with K D H E later in the week, next week to um have them help me kind of decipher some of that. I want to make sure, of course, that we're offering and awarding to people who are, you know, whose project meets K D H E's requirement. So it's it's best to verify with the source, so um more information on that to come. And we're still waiting to hear if we got the twenty twenty six. L E P P grant funding as well, I know they were um waiting to hear on their side, of course, K D H E's side, what kind of funding they get. They got a lot of requests for it, so still waiting on that, so. Um let's see, so a few other things, um short term rentals, we've talked a lot about some amendments on there over the last few months. Um so just wanted to give you an update on um the process with that. We're going to be bringing that to both our planning boards in June for their workshop, so we just have to go through the normal, normal procedure. Um of getting the amendments adopted, basically, so we'll have workshops with both our Riley County Planning Board and the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board in June. And then um if all of that goes okay, we'll plan to have our public hearings with them with both boards in July. And then it'll be back before you folks in in that form. Um at a subsequent meeting after we've held public hearings and sufficient time has passed, so we will um hear more about that this summer. Um and hopefully get those taken care of, originally, we were going to. Because we have some other land development regulation amendments that we want to make, and we were originally going to kind of just wait and tie those together. But really, it's it's some of the other pieces are going to take a little bit more time, and we didn't want to. You know, we've got the S T R amendments that we've already talked about, we didn't want them to just sit and just wait for X amount of time, so. We just decided to go forward with it, so just wanted to explain that, so. Um last week, um Riley County hosted the um Kansas Association of County Planning and Zoning Officials twenty twenty five annual conference. Um we had thirty-three people in attendance, which is um pretty good. Um so we talked about flood plains, ADUs, we got legislative updates from K A C, um we talked about short term rentals. I shared about our comprehensive plan update, um so a lot of good conversation. We we went out and toward the um quarry out there on Tabor Valley Road, right there on the afternoon where we were getting thunderstorms and hail. And so we observed from the bus, um but it was still. Um but we really appreciate their um hosting us and and they gave, we went to their office on Deep Creek and got um some good information first. And then again, we we took our little, our little field trip where again, we stayed on the bus, but we were still able to to see a good amount and and learn a lot. And people were really appreciative of um their staff and of that we were able to have that uh have that little tour, so. Um let's see, other things I want to make sure to mention. Um let's see, I am out of the office the week of May nineteenth, just want to uh make sure you're aware of that. And then I'm still working on, I know it's been kind of hanging out here on our list for a little while, um I still want to talk about um finding contractors. Uh when they start without a permit, and then um I know you also wanted a presentation on different types of water sys- wastewater system, so. That's still on my list, we will get that information to you folks for discussion soon. Um and anything else, of course, that you want to hear about or know about, please just let me know, so that should do it, and I know I'm over my time, but happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I just decided to grow a summer beard, I guess, I don't know what the thinking was behind that. I think as soon as the heat comes out.
Actually, usually it's the winter project.
Yeah, it usually is, yes, for certain. Got to go back here. There I am. Good morning Commissioners, Mike Bowler with the Riley County Noxious Weed with our staff update uh for the month of May. Our spring spraying began in April uh with our bare ground applications on county roads, and that includes our signs and bridges and guardrails. Uh I was a little concerned that we might not be able to complete this process this year, because we had replaced our spray truck, which still isn't online. Um however, we were able to get out there and get that process completed, so I'm very happy that we got that done. Uh we do spray in a high enough concentration that we could easily probably go a year at weed beef, so we planned for that. Uh but at any rate, we did get that taken care of this year. Township contracts will begin mid-May, we currently have four townships with two pending. Uh that's usually a a little above our average, we average about five from year to year. Uh so we'll probably be at six, I wouldn't be surprised if we get a couple of stragglers there at the end and end up with about seven to eight. Which would be a pretty high number, um but we're happy to provide that service to the townships. Spring seeding projects on the county right aways began in mid-March, and those have been completed, so we got our seed down and uh. With the rain we've got, hopefully those will begin to take if it didn't wash all the seed out, so fingers crossed there. Uh county roadside mowing will begin towards the end of May, that is always just a kind of see where we're at with conditions. Uh we did or do have a cool spring and we've had a moist spring, so vegetation growth in the ditches is going to be. Uh quite a bit this year, so our mowing will probably be a bit slower as the grass is going to be pretty thick, but. Uh we're going to get started on that here real soon. As a reminder, Riley County has cost share chemical for landowners for the treatment of noxious weeds. Uh we do have a good supply of that this year and prices have been stable. Uh and actual chemical prices are beginning to drop a little bit, so we're happy to see that. As a reminder, muss thistle is a noxious weed in Kansas, and it is at the stage of growth. Uh it has yet to bolt, usually I get a phone call when the purple heads start to bolt and everybody sees them, but that is. Really, we're on the clock when we see it bolt like that, well, within a couple of weeks of it going to seed. Uh and so I like to try to get it out now is the time to spray it, once they bolt. Uh by the time I give proper notice and they get it sprayed, it is almost too late at that point. Uh but that is when I receive the phone call, so a reminder that it is a good time of year to do that. And another reminder, we do have rental sprayers, we're one of the few counties in Kansas to provide that service. So we have those.
I was asked about that um last week, and I didn't really. I didn't really know, so I told them, talk to you.
Yep, yep, we sure do.
I think it was um Crawford County, I think, I can't remember.
There's a handful across the state that do it, I can give you ten reasons not to do it and ten reasons to do it. Um it is an expense, it is a tremendous expense to the county, uh but we are very proud that we provide that. And it takes that element of excuse of not treating your weeds, that we'll even provide the equipment to do it, so. Uh it's something that I believe is a worthwhile effort and worth the cost, but uh they're not cheap. The the sprayers are about to outfit a sprayer is about ten thousand dollars now. Uh and we are at roughly a hundred dollars rental for a weekend for them.
Do you do a deposit or anything along with it?
We do not usually. We do not, usually we have had some damage and individuals have paid for that damage. Having said that, what we found that many property owners had sprayers, but when they go down in the draws and the brush, we do not rent these for spraying a brush. And so that's something we have to police and investigate a little bit, sometimes we hurt feelings when people come in and we inquire if it's about noxious weed and they kind of ho-hum, and, um, so usually when folks are wanting to get down in the draws and beat up equipment, they would prefer to beat our equipment up.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
And so, really, that, that, that burden falls on our shoulders to police that and ensure that that doesn't happen, and we've done a pretty good job. Here, a couple of years ago, we had, we had a tongue literally ripped off the front of the sprayer, they must have drug it behind the tractor or something, so. But they made it right, they, they paid for that expense, but, um, to answer your question, no, we don't put a deposit, but we haven't had that issue, and if we've had damage, folks have stepped up and.
And that was when, in case, you see, they had somebody talk about the fact you shouldn't rent out county equipment.
Yeah, well, a- again, I can give you ten reasons not to do it, ten reasons. Oh, well, we do get inquiries, I get phone calls from folks up north all the time that ask if we've got different equipment, and, and one gentleman in particular calls me on a regular basis, and I have to tell him.
Well, I think there's.
No, you know, we don't do that, but he still asks.
There's other smaller counties and stuff that don't have like a rental center USA or place that rents out, you know, small equipment, bigger equipment, forklifts, bobcats, you know, that sort of thing, so.
But we do have.
Sure, that's a problem here, that's, shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, we do have sprayers, and I can tell.
Just in case we change our policy.
Yeah, yeah, well, yes, uh, Mr. Turner up north, yeah, I talk to him on a regular basis, I think it's going to have been a running joke now, I think he'd like to borrow my truck at some.
That one's on you.
But anyway, yes, we do have it, and the Kansas Department of Ag really applauds us for providing that service, so hats off to us, I suppose. On the HHW side of the house, we will have our, uh, collection truck this, uh, Saturday, May tenth, from eight to noon. Um, and wildly popular, we're getting, this time of year, we will have up to eighty people in four hours dropping off chemical down there, so it's, it's, it's a, a fun operation, you're busy for four hours, but lots of positive comments on that. Uh, we do have some latex paint right now, we've been processing a lot of paint in the springtime, that is wildly popular. Uh, big thing we've been working on Clean Harbors is working on the chemical profile with the abandoned barrels up there, all at township. Uh, usually this process can take up to six months to try to specifically identify the chemical that's in there. Um, I got the bright idea to got, I asked Manhattan Hazmat One to get involved, and we took some samples, they ran them samples. I provided the outcome of that to, uh, Clean Harbors, and that should help facilitate getting a profile built on this a lot quicker. And so I'm grateful for MFD to provide that service to us, and so that will help bring that along, hopefully, so. A- and then we are checking the soil samples up there as well, and as soon as we have an idea or those process come back, I'll make sure, I'll make sure the commission's aware of the results of that. Then, uh, we're, Justin and I are always seeking training, uh, we provide all the training in the state at the HHW, it always comes through our facility. So we are often looking for train-to-trainer opportunities, if you will. Uh, I reached out to my counterpart, uh, in Boulder County. Uh, out in Colorado, they are all in on HHW and recycling, they are well-funded and well-trained. Uh, and she has been outstanding, Shelley Fuller is her name, and she has got Justin and I uh, going to be in, uh, enrolled with the Denver, um, Fire Department on lithium ion battery training. Um, at the time that I wrote this, I don't have a date, but I do now, June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. That, of course, will be subject to the commission's approval for my out-of-state travel, so I will get back to the commission soon for the approval on that, but hopefully the commission sees the value in this, the training will be free, it's just a matter of getting out there, and then, of course, the, uh, hotels where we're out there, but when it comes to Justin and I's training, when we train in the state, it essentially comes down, we're going to have to go out of the state to get some training, um. And so lithium ion battery is, as the commission knows, is a very, uh, literally hot topic right now. Um, with the fires out in Palisades, they realized the, the damage. Uh, my understanding, it took between four to six days per electric vehicle to process that vehicle, uh, with the lithium ion batteries that's in there, um, so, um, a lot of potential hazard there, they can explode, um, once they've been damaged. So with that, um, looking forward to getting in front of the commission and asking for some out-of-state trail travel, but as far as the staff update this month, that concludes that, and I stand for any questions you may have that may have about any noxious weeds that are growing or HHW that's going on. No pressing questions.
I have a question about.
Oh, wonderful.
What did the grown grass say to the pushing musk, musk thistle?
I do not know.
Stop being such an obnoxious weed.
Yes. But they're noxious weeds.
Right.
Yeah, they're noxious. That's, that's good, thank you. I'll have to share that one with the rest of, hopefully I get. It was actually so dry, I can humor in that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Next question, Brittany Phillips, ten thirty.
You know, to measure this way. So I got one out of the fire, and, you know, so then I'm working on. Years.
You honestly would think that we're related.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, here to discuss with you, um, appropriations again, so we received a request this week um, from Vicky James for about Food and Farm Council. Um, she had said that on Monday, Commissioner McKinley, she had spoken with you, and you had told her to reach out. Um, and so I will say, we, we've gotten other requests from other outside entities, and I, I have already told them, you know, that the commission decided we weren't hearing any other outside entities. Um, and so I just, I did want that on your radar. Um, so this is a separate request, just asking if you would like to hear from Food and Farm Council for this year.
The one thing she talked to me about, there's some grant that's available for them, that has to have a match. You know, and that's. Like, of course, I also told her, I said, "I thought you were going to retire two years ago, and when you fund enough to hire somebody, then I can retire."
She has mentioned that, I, the issue I have here is, is I feel like we're kind of picking and choosing at this point in time.
Well, that's what we do every time.
Well, I understand that, but we need to be able to open it up to everybody else that we've said no to, just to be fair, I mean, on this particular request, at some point in time, we probably need to sit back down with the city and figure out uh, how to go about this, since we, that's the two entities that put this together, and I'm okay with that, I have no issues there, but in terms of, for budgetary and appropriation requests, I think we need to be careful about we kind of pick and choose to come in and get hearings, it, either we need to just open it up and let everybody have that opportunity, including them, and that's fine, or I just think we need to be very careful.
I understand, looks good.
Well, if she needs, if, if she's got a grant for a match, couldn't that come in on a separate request, that they're requesting the match for, rather than full appropriation or request?
I would think so, I mean, they could, but, and I think that would be a discussion like at a city-county-county meeting at this point in time, because they do take care of the region, see how we could all appropriate that accordingly, and I think that would be a good dialogue to have.
Did she say if her grant was for this year, or is it for next year?
There's one coming up right now.
Okay.
And I said, "We might be better off trying to do it next year," but I said, "We'd, I'd try," that, you know, and maybe it is a long-term, it's, this year, it's, you know, um, is that deadlines were coming up pretty soon on that. That's why I said, well.
KDHE Solid Waste Grant, and it's, the, the deadline is due May fifteenth, and she and I talked a little bit about it too, and it's an annual grant, and I also encouraged her maybe let's think about for next year, because it's, because also the county would have to apply on their behalf to the Food and Farm Council camp. It, they're, they're not, they're not like an eligible entity, so I don't think that part would be a problem, but obviously having those conversations is still too tight.
But, yeah, I, I, I have to ask a question, I mean, is it us, I mean, the city's involved in that as well, and.
So all that would need to be, yeah.
Yeah, she'd say she, we would have to apply to it.
Okay.
Because the way it's.
And, and that is something that the Health Department was doing prior, they were applying for grants on on behalf of like the Food and Farm Council and other outside organizations like the, um, I think there's a Flint Hills, um, I, I think it was the Veterans Coalition that they were applying for and helping manage grants for them before, um. And then we had given a reimbursement back to Food and Farm Council, because we were housing a lot of their grants. In, um, so in twenty-four, we had to issue all that money back to them towards the end when we took things over, um, and it was like fifty-five thousand dollars that we had the Health Department managing for the Food and Farm Council. It, it's quite a bit of funding.
I do, yeah. We had that discussion in nineteen as we were kind of formulating this whole thing, yeah, okay.
Now, what was our deadline for appropriations?
It was, um, April twenty-second.
And that went out to everybody?
It went out to everybody that the commission approved, so, um, it was is our, like, normal people, so like monumental health, Flint Hills veteran, um, that group, and then you had also requested that I send one out to be able um, to hear from them, and then you requested that I reach out to small cities and see if they had any requests, and all of them came back and said no, but Be Able did submit a request. And he's on Monday's agenda.
Well, I just told them.
That's good.
But, yeah, and I did say, it sounded like maybe start the process for next year might be the better idea, might let her know.
Okay.
That's kind of a short timeframe.
But given that, I mean, she would need to request it this year to make an appropriation request, so I guess staff needs a consensus from the board on if you wish for her to make a presentation for this year, for next year's to have funding.
Yeah, not for appropriation, but I think there's an, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Fokie, I think there's another way through other funds to to maybe, um, take care of that, yeah, yeah.
To pay for it out of twenty-five budget?
The thing is, staff needs direction on where to get.
I don't want to do it through appropriation, that's all I'm going to say.
We still need direction from where, if there is a consensus.
If there is, yeah, where else, where are we hiding our money if we do that?
We don't hide money anywhere.
I know, that's, that's.
Do we consider that some kind of economic development, we always have a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, there.
It wasn't large enough.
No.
And we could look at that, but, uh, with economic development, we've also talked about the US Highway, the twenty-four corridor study, and that's where we're planning for that, that fund, and that would take up a good chunk of our twenty twenty-five budget.
But it sounds like to me we're not talking about this year on this, we're talking about next year, but I'd rather get into next year and see where we're actually at on that, and.
So don't specifically, doesn't need anything for the twenty twenty-six budget, this time the board will see if they want to fund it next year. Do you have any, do we have, anyone have an idea on how much, that way we?
Well, she mentioned twenty-five hundred to me.
Yeah, I thought.
I think it's good for everyone.
It's not, yeah, that's. I don't remember exactly, I thought that's what it was, it isn't, that's why it wasn't a huge amount, but.
Yeah.
What is the grant for specifically? What's it for?
I don't.
It's there, so it's a solid waste, um, uh, KDHE Solid Waste Grant, and they wanted to apply for their child match app.
Oh, she mentioned that on Monday, okay.
So would you be helping her apply for that, since she's been talking to you?
I would think so.
Okay.
If, if obviously that's allowed, but yeah.
Okay. So I will reach back out to Vicky and let her know that we aren't looking to, um, for any more appropriations, but we would be happy to discuss, providing that match with economic development funds for twenty twenty-six, and telling her we won't apply this year, but next year.
You kind of summed it up in your commission, I put the board agreed to consider a match next year based on available funding, is that
Yeah.
appropriate for the board?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Corey is here for the executive session, I was going to ask the boards, though, if I don't see Corey or myself included in that next executive session, the security nineteen or something, we worked together on all the time, we should probably.
I'm hearing sirens, sorry.
I mean, I don't know what it's for, you know, I mean, we don't hide.
Yes. So, Brittany.
Yeah.
And I would like, I'm asking if you would stay or approval for. No, that was the request that we'd made.
Oh, okay.
But Corey and myself are not on there.
Okay, well, I can add you.
Yeah, just want to be sure.
Yep.
Okay, so he only had places.
I'd need to know more than Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Charles Wilson Insurance.
Mike Whitman, C and W Insurance.
Okay. I got nothing to write on. Let's write this bucket, write down the side.
Who, who else is included?
Me, Corey Meyer, Mike Whitman, and Rich Bargo, to add what's already there.
Mike.
Mike what again?
Whitman, W I D M A N.
And, and Rich. That's almost a whole group here, so you say everybody's here.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, Stephanie Haverd, Administrative Assistant with Riley County Community Corrections. I'm here today to bring to you the county alcohol funding recommendations that were approved by the J-CAB meeting last week. As a reminder, county alcohol funds are dollars collected from establishments within the county. Monies in the Special Alcohol and Drug Program shall be expended only for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of services or programs whose principal purpose is alcoholism and drug abuse prevention and education, detoxification, intervention, or drug abuse and treatment. Um, we did receive four applications this year, um, they were. Um, we did receive four applications this year. Um, they were from Be Able, the Twenty First Judicial District Court Services, Manhattan Emergency Shelter, and the Ogden Community Center. After reviewing the applications, the J C A B voted at their meeting last week to approve the court services and Ogden Community Centers' applications for their full requests, which are, uh, sorry, I had them here, twenty five hundred for the Ogden Community Center and two thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and thirty seven cents for court services. Uh, they elected to do half of the request for Be Able. They requested ten thousand and they approved five thousand. And there was a little bit of concern about the Manhattan Emergency Shelter not necessarily meeting the guidelines, uh, set forth in the statute for how the funds should be spent. So they did table that one and asked that it be returned for some clarification, or they approved anything on that. There is currently twenty four thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars and ninety six cents in the fund. It does get deposited, it's quarterly. Um, if we did approve those three recommendations, that would take us down to ten thousand fifty four dollars and thirty seven cents. Oh, I'm sorry. That's the total recommendation is ten thousand fifty four dollars and thirty seven cents. It would leave about fourteen thousand. Apologies. Um, so, uh, the recommendation would be to approve Be Able and Court Services, I'm sorry, Court Services and Ogden Community Center for their full request and Be Able at fifty percent and to table the emergency shelters application.
And these are for specifically dealing with, uh, drug and alcohol addiction.
That's what the funds are to be used for, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's why.
Education.
Emergency shelter wasn't specific.
Yes, for education prevention, um, anything like that, the emergency shelters was more, uh, specifically for funding, assisting to fund, uh, overnight position. And the concern of the J C A B was that, uh, people that are currently, um, that are under the influence are turned away when they report to the emergency shelter, so they kind of don't get their services. So they, we were wanting to expand on how are you going to help them, um, when they aren't allowed in? So.
And that's where like Be, Be Able would probably pick them up at that point.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Is that the total left? Is that within the range? I mean, I, I'm sure it goes up and down through the year. Like, say, we get more and, and they spend some out, but.
I have included, um, we typically stick around, the lowest we've ever gone is about three thousand. So we like to have three to five thousand to carry over to the next year. The funds do carry over for the next year's use. So that would still leave us a bit to approve for Manhattan Emergency Shelter if they decided they wanted to do that.
I would make a motion to approve funding, uh, to Be Able in the amount of five thousand dollars, Court Services, Twenty First Judicial District, in the amount of two thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and thirty seven cents, and the Ogden Community Center in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. And this is, um, for, um, funding for, or out of the county alcohol tax fund.
We also need to add tabling.
And tabling the application for the Mountain, Manhattan Emergency Shelter Inc.
I can second that.
It's been moved and segmented to prove funding through the, excuse me, the alcohol funds, um, as previously listed. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, fire department's responding to a fire.
Where?
Does it say?
One twenty one Fourth Street. That's where the sirens are.
Oh, okay.
Fire sirens.
And there was other. Renting tools involved. Okay. Yeah, we figured that out already. All right, I'll go ahead and move that the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie, and Commissioner Ford, with Brian Parker, um, counselor, and Jacob Hanson, Deputy County Counselor, Attorneys for the Commission, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, Rich Vargo, Riley County Clerk, Cory Meyer, Riley County, um, I T Director, and Mike Whitman, uh, from Charleston Wilson, uh, recessed into executive session to discuss matters relating to security measures that protect the public body or agency, public building or facility, or the information systems of a public body or agency, which would be jeopardized if discussed in an open meeting, in exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing information technology measures of the county. The open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at, uh, I'm assuming eleven A M. Yeah.
I would second that.
A good move.
How long is it gonna, how long you really need?
How long do we need?
Well, I mean, what, how long do you need for questions, I guess? Like, I mean, he's given a pretty broad overview.
He was getting ready to be more specific.
What, you got another minute, Mike?
Thirty seconds.
Depends on how many questions you guys have.
I don't have any.
Fifteen minutes, ten minutes, no.
Ten?
My questions are fairly simple, but.
Okay, I'm gonna move that the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
We moved in second to come out of, to have a board to come out of executive session, all in favor.
Alright.
I'll move that the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded, the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor.
Only that the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford with Bryant Parker, County Counselor and Jacob Hansen, Deputy County Counselor, Attorneys for the Commission, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, Rich Vargo, Riley County Clerk, Corey Meyer, Riley County IT Director, and Mike Weidman from Charleston Wilson, recess into executive session to discuss matters relating to a security measures that protect a body, public body, or agency, public building or facility, or the information systems of a public body or agency which would be jeopardized if discussed in an open meeting. It's an exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing information technology security measures of the county. The open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at eleven ten AM.
I'll second that.
Then moved and seconded for the county commission to recess in executive session for reasons previously stated, under the security discussions portion of the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor.
Aye.
Alright.
We are live. I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded, the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor.
Aye. Move that the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session.
Second that.
Been moved and seconded, the record reflect action shall be taken consistent with the consensus reached in executive session, all in favor.
Aye. Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We scared John off, I guess we did. Thanks, Ford, appreciate it.
Yeah. Hanging here for the last two.
Like, I shouldn't have planned, so.
How to start?
That's for the, yeah.
That's somebody trying to enter too.
Oh, cause he's helping with David Adams, that's the architect for the EMS.
Well, sir.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
Haven't seen you in a couple weeks.
Not quite.
Still laughing, did I?
Towards the end now.
Okay.
Enter, John.
Yep.
You ready?
Yeah.
Good.
Well, good morning, John Ellerman, Public Works, and do we need this? Oh, well, I look, I do have. I don't wanna look at myself. At least I get the choice. There. There we go.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, you know.
See you on TV.
No, no, I don't like me on TV.
Let's mof, we need to see the presenter.
You know, I, it's not a good thing I gave you the right one, cause mine don't have any notes on. I have a, 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 um, so this, today we're here for the space needs study for the Health Department and FCRC. A lot of the information or the request and the statement regarding the qualifications request is similar to maybe what we saw in the courthouse judicial services building. This one more geared to them, and so I've tried to put together some of a scope of what we were looking for. So far, still. So, you know, same as meet with staff to figure out what they need now, or what they have now, what they need in the future. Looking at the buildings that they have existing and seeing how it, part of that would be how they fit best in those buildings and maybe the idea of combining into one building. So the, it's the same kind of setup as we have with judicial services, we'll send these out here this week yet. First to next week, put the latest. Then have maybe a, a chance for each interested consultant to visit the site, take a look at the site and see what they have, and then submit their statement of qualifications around the first of June. And then if we think we need interviews from a couple firms that we're interested in, we can have those. And then we'll present our findings or requests to, which one we approve to you at a later date throughout the end of June. It was my intention to have myself, maybe Amanda, and pressure Diane on the selection committee to go through these consultants as they bring in their requests.
I think one of us needs to be on, select, look at those two.
That's up to you guys. We're just here to facilitate.
What's that?
I'm here to facilitate. If you still want me to after today.
I would be happy to, but, you know, I don't know.
Okay. One thing that, you know, he said he had fiscal you know, fiscal impact that, you know, until we get farther along. Is there a way to, or maybe for the interview, cause you're not gonna have a separate RFP, right? This is just.
I don't, I didn't intend to have a separate RFP on these.
But when we go to the interview stage, you might just, I think we need to have costs before we make, we did it without cost ahead of time on one project that I think we got worked over on. That
Preliminary cost kind of.
Yeah.
A budget of some sort.
Let's say that.
We can I didn't ask for that in the qualifications, but as we, if we decide to do an interview, we can ask them for that, some kind of estimated cost.
You know, it's asked, you know.
Of their cost.
I mean, and we did that on the EMS building, yes.
We did, cause we went.
That was a different type.
Qualifications and proposal.
Yeah, right.
I mean, we can go back and do a proposal when we didn't do it with the judicial center.
But, yeah.
Well, these, these buildings are already there, so it's all different than, you know.
I just think if we damn, talking about the, the, the Landville station, look at the cost, the, the architect versus what we did on the MS, it's cause we didn't ask for price till after we'd selected somebody, but I don't think that's the best idea.
That we can, I mean, yeah, before we.
And I realize until they sit down and go through it, but they should be able to get a range of what they think it's gonna be.
I could still add that as part of the requirements of submitting that give us a.
Okay. That, I like.
They, they may squawk at that, at some, because typically the consultants designed this so they didn't have to do that. We're not bidding out their services, we're picking the best service and negotiating cost. We can ask for whatever we wanna ask for.
Right. I like it, but I think we need it.
Well, they're going to come up with a design in here, right?
Right.
Preliminary design, so they should be able to kind of figure out some sort of range based on the design that come up.
It may not be a hard.
Not a hard.
At least a range, range of what they think it's gonna be.
Okay, we have to be transparent. So.
It's, says in here, develop cost estimates for each proposed solution.
The best cost excellent for that construction, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's not for the study.
Yeah, I know, it's gonna be really big.
Yeah.
Extra, you know, very much contingency built in at some of those costs.
You can sense from the board to ask for that estimated cost in the proposal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Estimated, we talked about range, range of class.
Yeah, that's what that is. Estimated cost. Lot of median. I mean, whatever. So, are we good with everything else then?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead then, make a motion. Board agrees to the RFQ for the space needs study of the Health Department and the FCRC.
Would second that.
We moved and seconded, the board agrees to the RFQ for space needs study of the Health Department and FCRC as amended, all in favor. Aye.
Thanks, Sean. He's here for them, yeah. Nope.
No, there's another executive session.
Oh, that's, okay.
I'm gonna end up.
Which is which one?
Too, sorry. Yeah.
Which one is that? Counselor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
How can you hear us? There you go. Now, can you hear me? Are you there? Yeah, can you hear me?
We're not hearing enough.
You've got the volume down off of often.
I've done that before. I'll try and speak again for us.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Is it on?
Again, Kyle? Yes, can you hear me? That work? All right.
New system. Good morning, Commissioners David Adams, C M S, C M S director. I've got Andrew Girth from V H S with us and then Kyle Morrison from Arc Images. He was planning to be here in person, but he got caught in construction traffic and was at a standstill for well over 20 minutes and he was going to, he was going to be late, so I suggested he just go back to the office and we would just zoom him in. So hope that's okay. So, so what we're going to do is, as we've done a few of these now, it's just kind of an update on where we are with the headquarters construction and kind of what's going forward. And then Kyle is going to help speak on, on the progress and where we at with the emergency management, rural fire remodel and such. So and then answer any questions you have for that as well. So unless you have something for me, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew and let the experts speak.
Morning. Thank you for having me back to speak about the EMS station. Update number three. I guess let it be known it wasn't our construction that Kyle got stuck in. Glad he was able to join us.
Is that time of the year?
We zoom. So I did get this updated to show our substantial completion date, the current year. Six twenty-two, twenty-five instead of twenty twenty-four, which was not going to happen. But currently give you an update of where we're at, kind of what percent complete we are and, and show you some photos. For those who haven't maybe driven by or been inside for a while. We're currently working through, we've got all the siding done on the building, so we're working through some of the equipment screens, some of the soffit metal panels actually dropped off or got samples for some of that. Patio screening today to get selections verified to get those installed. But we are working our way around with the sidewalks and paving. So the exterior is really starting to take shape. Getting in our tie-in with the F C R C to the north. And then we'll work on tying some of those sidewalk features back in for the rest of the campus there. On the building, we do have our eyebrow installed then over the most of the windows. There's one that came damaged that we're waiting on a replacement. It just shipped out today and so we'll get that installed when it shows up here. And then we've got a canopy over the rear entrance to the admin building that we're working on getting that installed as well. So as you come into the building, if it's raining, you're somewhat sheltered from the rain waiting to get in. We're also working through door hardware install. Getting our final paint done throughout the throughout the building. We just finished all the dry fall ceiling in the ambulance bay. So it's really starting to take shape. We've got some accent striping to do through that space that'll really tie in some of those blue colors from the outside to the inside of the building. So we're working through that, working through plumbing and electrical trim out. Riley County has got a couple of their guys doing security camera install. So it's kind of a team effort getting through to the, to the finish line here. Currently, we're still at our original contract of nine million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and eight. And we currently are still carrying a contingency of approximately five hundred and nine thousand dollars. We will be using a portion of that as we're tying in some of the site paving site drainage to expand into F C R C parking lot to the north there with some existing conditions. And then additional railings that were added. We added some of that retaining wall on the backside along that bridge. And so we're going to go ahead and extend that railing for security measures. Currently, we are, this is through work completed through March. We were at seven million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine in total billings to date. We'll have another pay application here in the next week. That number will jump up, but we are currently showing about seventy-eight percent completed and billed to date. And then this lower portion kind of shows as far as completion status of where we're at by kind of scope of work division, our site work is about seventy-five percent complete. Concrete is about eighty complete and that will be jumping up quite a bit here as we progress through the next couple of weeks. Weather pending. We don't get any more two and a half inch rains that.
Five inches of hail on top of.
Right, so we're we're working our way through that and the nice thing is that there is some decent drainage out of that space and the quicker that we get that paving put down, it'll alleviate the concerns for the people in the F C R C of water getting into their space. So we should have that done here fairly quickly. The masonry is about ninety-seven percent complete. We've got some masonry on the trash enclosure to the south. We're working around the building with our site work to be prepared to get that installed. Steel is a hundred percent complete. Framing, drywall, blocking is a hundred percent complete. Our mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire is about ninety-three percent complete. Just getting everything tied in. It's all our final fixtures, lights. Devices are all getting installed. And then finishes are approximately ninety-five percent complete with that. You'll see in the photos, we've got a lot of our ceilings are in, a lot of the ceiling tile is already in, so it really feels like the finished space. Our site work, we will get complete in June. I said our steel is complete. Our building concrete is complete and our site concrete will be done here hopefully by the end of this month. Framing is complete and then our M E P will be getting completed here in the next month. Just over. We do have some electrical, we're waiting on a piece of equipment that is not scheduled to be delivered until July. It's the manual transfer switch associated with the generator. We'll have everything else installed and so we will at some point have to schedule a shutdown to get that piece of equipment installed, but it will it won't hinder the use of that space. Looking at some photos kind of from when we left off in the end of January till now, we had started metal panel install early February, got our equipment screens up. We started the casework install on the admin side of the area C and started our wall tile and floor tile in the restrooms on the admin side. See, ceiling grid, ceiling fixtures, speakers, all those devices started going in around mid February. Gear lockers off of the ambulance bay were installed. And then moved in early March during the casework install in the living quarter. Here you can see the casework for the kitchen area. Also, in March, we got the kind of the feature wall in the day room completed. Some chip lap siding and lower casework for their entertainment center. We got the accent tile. There's some you have not been in there, some really cool looking accent tile. That goes behind some of the drinking fountains. It looks really sharp, ties in well. And some of our accent ceilings also got installed. Here in the bottom left, that shows the finished product of the casework kitchen with the solid surface countertops. And then you can see in the bottom right as we start looking outside, those metal panels all installed. Photo showing the kind of feature ceiling as you come into admin area into the main hallway. There's some really cool wood ceiling features and then a couple of accent lights. You can see kind of the finish of the wall tile ceilings, the lights on in the admin restrooms. We do have all of the bathroom partitions that we're about to start install on. And then back outside last week about, we got the back drive in from the garage bays poured out and out over the main parking lot to the west. And then they, they're working through getting sidewalks, paving, and we've got some additional paving put down even. Kind of gives you an idea of what's going on inside and out. Also, you can kind of see that one of the eyebrows on the west side of the large conference room, a training center, and then there's a couple others installed there over the offices as well. Those are all the photos I have and the update. If you guys have any questions or.
Moving right along. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll tell you that it has moved very quickly for the last year and a half and now it is just, it's killing me. Because now it's all the finish, we can't see, you know, so there's a lot that's working there, but it's like you know. I could see steel go up. I could see the outside go up. I could see, you know, now it's the, those little things that you can't see.
You just need to remember that the finishing work is what gets you closer to moving into the building.
I know, but so but it's coming along very well. Of course, people are, his company's inside doing the training room as, as well right now. So we're getting that put in and such. So I T is in there putting, doing their stuff. KCOM is doing there. So it's not, you know, like you said, there's a lot of different companies in there kind of working pretty hard. So.
What flooring has been brought up.
Yeah.
Yes, so we have one of the L V Ts, the accent L V T luxury vinyl tile flooring, supposed to be getting delivered today and then the balance of the L V T is scheduled to get shipped next week. So we had running some issues with the manufacturer trying to track down all of the product that they have across the country, but we've tracked down a good portion of it and the rest of it's supposed to be shipping out early next week. And so been in delivery today, we should start install tomorrow or first of next week in the day room to get that installed. And then when we get the balance of that tile, we'll get the admin flooring finished up. We have all the carpet in and all of our epoxy flooring in, in our tile. It's just this, this last bit of flooring. Which is on the admin side is in the corner. Right now it's, it's concrete, but hopefully here in the next week to two weeks, that will all be installed.
Anything else you can do? Okay, Kyle. We'll kind of turn it over to you if that works. Do you have PowerPoint or anything?
I do. Let me see if I can share my screen here. Hopefully this will work properly. Are you all able to see that?
Yes. I'll let Cory kind of.
All right. Well, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Just ran into a little road closure that wasn't expected this morning. So I, Dave, David has asked me to report on the status of the remodel project. As you may recall, as we were working through in the original planning and budgeting, we ended up on a strategy of building the EMS building and then once it, it is complete and they move out, then the existing building would be remodeled for emergency management and fire. Let's see here. So the, the current plan and, and plan to scope of the project, I'll kind of go from right to left on this. Are you, are you all able to see my cursor? I don't think you can. Yeah. Oh, you are? Okay. Well, so this portion of the building currently on the right side here is is used as the living space and some office space for EMS. And that's the part that we're going to repurpose as office space for emergency management. There is some of the existing concrete slab that has to be pulled up to repair a, a sanitary sewer that has collapsed. So partially because of that and really just to make a better plan, we ended up on a, on a tack where we're really moving a lot of the walls in the, in the existing building to create a space that functions well for them. We'll have a new public entrance down here that comes into a waiting room and is kind of a secure entrance where people then have to be allowed into the building rather than just being able to come on in. The east wall is to be moved out a bit, little bit. Right now it's set inside the columns by oh, two or three feet. And we're moving it out to capture a little bit more space and out to the edge of the roof line there. The patio, patio itself, the paving in there is deteriorated and will be redone. Then moving on over to the left, the kind of the purple area there is currently three garage bays and we're going to take those bays out to create the meeting space that can be used for training and emergency operations. It'll also have the I T room in it. And a, and a backup dispatch area. We are bumping out on the north or backside for a storm shelter. This got kicked around a lot in terms of just how to accomplish a storm shelter, where would be the best place to locate the storm shelter. in terms of just how to accomplish a storm shelter, where would be the best place to locate the storm shelter and so forth. And, uh, we have, uh, settled on this location as the best location for it. So we'll just cut a hole through the existing concrete wall and pour a new concrete, um, storm shelter out there. And then then continuing to move to the left, these two bays will remain pretty much as they are now with new garage doors on them. We'll have all new HVAC plumbing, electrical and a new generator on the building and new roofs. On, uh, on, uh, the entire building. So then on the exterior, the picture in the upper left, um, is what the exterior looked like as of Tuesday of this week. And then the bottom picture is a rendering of, uh, what we're anticipating the exterior will look like with the exception that you'll notice that it has three garage doors and that was an earlier rendition. It will actually be only two garage doors showing and the, uh, new, um, siding will come on across to enclose that room. As I mentioned, uh, all new roofs, um, and then there's some structural repairs needed on the exterior, um, where the, uh, those glue lamp beams are deteriorated. One thing that we'll, we just kind of got to wait and see what happens when we tear off that existing siding. Um, I'm sure there's some deterioration on the tresses in behind. Um, I suspect that it's going to be pretty simple to repair once that's exposed. But but there will be a little bit of an unknown in that area. Also, um, we're anticipating a radio tower, uh, that I think the county already owns. It's, um, and it will be attached to that shelter on the north side. It's a wall mounted. Uh, antenna that's a sixty foot antenna. So we're going to attach it to that new construction so we can design for the structural reactions. Um, rather than trying to figure out about the existing building and bounding it on that. And then on the site, um, what, uh, to to just make things flow better, give a little bit more parking, better public access to the building. We're planning to remove the drive from the upper parking lot down to the lower parking lot and then reconfigure to open up the drive lane, uh, as more of a drive through parking lot out to, uh, the what was the apparatus apron for the ambulances. This, uh, would will involve a new, um, sidewalk access to make a little bit more, um, public, uh, uh, better public access to the the building for folks coming in, getting the burn permits and so forth when they're accessing the building. So that's the plan. We're looking at, uh, having drawings done in about six weeks for BHS to, um, to bid subtrades and so forth. Estimating so far appears that we're, uh, going to be within uh, that original budget that we that we talked about. And, uh, with that's what I have. Do you have any questions?
Those door, the, um, doors for the fire trucks, are those tall enough with what we have?
You're talking about the garage doors on there? They they won't be for fire trucks. It's for smaller stuff like generators and light towers.
Okay.
Yeah, there won't be any fire trucks in it.
And the orange is not not accepted. That's Oklahoma color.
It's more like a Home Depot.
Yeah.
But we can talk about.
It's it's really, uh, it may be showing up as orange on your screen, but it's really a fire department red.
Oh, okay, that's fair. Around the building or could get on the other?
I I anticipate, what I anticipate commissioners is on the triangle part, putting the the blue R. And then over on the other gray wall, put, you know, emergency management, fire district number one, and maybe even emergency operations center over on that gray wall, something to designate who's who's actually in the building.
What about, you gonna do anything with that circle over there?
The cir-, I'm sorry, the circle?
Yeah, the circle on the.
If if I recall, uh, the the original architect, that was kind of their their stamp. And you see those throughout town. So that was kind of their 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 thing was to have a wall with the with that circle.
It was a nineteen eighties thing. We talked about that and elected not to spend any money doing anything with it.
Oh, there's.
If you, if you look from museum.
A lot of houses with that.
Yep, so.
Circle's interesting. We got to do something with signage anyway. May that not be a good idea to put your, you know, to fill that in with something and it'd be unique and stand out, but just different ideas.
We could, uh, you know, either put the Maltese cross or the blue R over there, either way.
Blue R?
I think you want the blue on the main part of the building. It just seemed like you could incorporate that somehow inexpensively, but you got to put a sign up somewhere.
Right.
Yeah. We can certainly look at that.
Modernize the nineteen eighty look a little.
There you go.
You already have history with the building because in our building since its, um, since its inception, so. Maybe look at it a couple of different ways and move the signs around and.
It just seems like in one area it's kind of shaded in a corner.
Yeah.
Not very visible, but especially with that window on the outside, you know?
Yeah, I don't know if that window would stay in. Kyle talked about it's a pretty expensive window, so.
But it's whatever Russell and the board prefer, just an idea to go out there.
Yeah, we talked about the circle and we can sure explore explore options there. Any other questions for Kyle, Commissioner?
You have any other questions for us? No? Okay. Thank you, Kyle, very much.
All right. Thank you all. Take care.
I'm gonna get myself in trouble there.
So much for having your name on the building.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm not saying, I'll probably get myself in trouble.
It'll be some creative thing to put in that space, you know?
Thanks, Cory. Appreciate it.
Thank you for doing twelve oh five.
At what time?
We'll move on. Striking out all over the place.
Okay, I'll move that the county commissioners, including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Foby and Commissioner Ford, Brian Parker, County Counselor, Attorney for the Commission, recessed into executive session on a performance matter of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. For the purpose of discussing the terms of employment of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee, the open meeting to resume the county commission chamber at twelve oh five again.
That was seconded up.
The move and seconded for the county commission to recess and executive session for reasons previously stated. Your performance matter of the non-elected personnel exception ends open meeting act. All in favor?
Ten minutes, fifteen? Fifteen looks pretty sure. I'm gonna have to cancel my twelve thirty it looks like. Okay. Uh, I'll move, let's see, I'll move the county board of county commissioners come out of executive session.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded the board of county commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor.
Aye.
I'll move that the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I'd second that.
Removed and seconded, record reflect no binding action was taken during executive session, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, I will move that the county commissioners including Chairman McKinley, Vice Chair Fokie and Commissioner Ford, with Brian Parker, County Councillor, attorney for the commission recess into executive session. On a performance matter of non-elected personnel, an exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing the terms of employment of an employee and to protect the privacy of the employee, the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at twelve twenty P M.
I would second that.
Then moved and seconded for the county commission to recess in the executive session for reasons previously stated under the performance matter of non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Missions, the meeting is live.
Okay, and I just put in the sheet a lot. Why, I get that. Ah, okay.
You got it?
No, I still don't have it.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm making motion, the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session.
Ah, second.
Been moved and seconded, the Board of County Commissioners come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye. When I move the record reflect that no, no binding action was taken during the executive session.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, the record reflect no binding action was taken during the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We need another motion.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna do something different today, I'm gonna end with dad jokes, if that's okay with you.
Oh, what?
More than okay.
Okay. After an unsuccessful harvest, why did the farmer decide to try and career in music?
Why?
Cause he had a ton of sick beats.
He had what?
A ton of sick beats.
Oh.
Real quick, does everyone want to go to policy break? It's May fifteenth.
Sure.
Chamber?
Maybe.
Uh, no sir. Actually, May fifteenth?
Yes.
Yes. I, it's a legislative review, so.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, they'll have a legislative session.
Then maybe, maybe.
I, I've, I've been pretty up to speed, then count me out if it's legislative.
Yeah, that's what it's gonna be.
Oh, wow, yeah, we've had two of those. I have those meetings quarterly, so.
Okay. Anything else? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the May first meeting of the Brown County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn the.